Approve the January 3, 2023, Homestead County Board Minutes. Designate official publication for county projects. Approve resolution for updated DNR Trail Agreement. Updated Human Services Advisory Board Bylaws. 2023 Health, Housing and Human Services Purchase of Service Agreement. Anoka County East Central Regional Juvenile Center Contract Agreement. Letter G, approve change order number eight for the Justice Space Remodel. H, approve Winona, Homestead County Professional Services Agreement. Letter I, approve gambling permit for Stuartville Sportsman's Club. Letter J, approve to continue membership in the Public Employees Retirement Association, which is also abbreviated PERA, for police and fire plan. And letter K, update contracts for licenses, licensed captains and county attorneys.
Move the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 3D.
3D.
We can discuss that under the motion.
All right, well, the consent agenda, other than letter D, we have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, did you just approve the consent agenda?
No, other than letter D, because you asked to pull letter D off. Is that correct?
Sure.
All right, so now we're voting on the rest of them. So all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, I think your motion isn't clear.
All right.
So I will move approval of the consent agenda of all the items except item D.
Very good. And is that your second?
Second.
Commissioner Mueller, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries. So let's go back to letter D then. What's your question, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would have almost liked to stay to the original one because I don't want to make a negative motion on this. So in order for me to talk about my issues, I'd like somebody to make a positive motion to approve this and we can see where it goes.
Mr. Chair, with that request, I'll move item D of the consent agenda.
All right, and I need a second.
Second.
All right, I have motion and a second, so all in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe there's an interest in discussion.
All right. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Chair and members, this is my problem with this. All certainly well-intended. I just don't fundamentally believe that a member of this board serving an advisory committee function should vote two places. I don't think they should be voting members of this advisory board. And that's in large part the reason I'm going to vote no on this. There's another part of it, though, that really does concern me also, and that's the conflict of interest, and I would call it a presumed conflict of interest. On any allegation rendered to the chair that a certain member would have a conflict of interest, that member is immediately disqualified participation according to the way this is written. And I just don't fundamentally think that's right. So we can go ahead with the vote. I'm just going to vote no on this one.
Okay. Let me see if I understand your issue, though. When you say that a person shouldn't vote twice on this, because most of the commissioners don't vote on advisory committees anyway.
Mr. Chair, this is an advisory group, I believe, that sends recommendations to the board.
That's correct.
And, Ms. Chair, the idea, at least that I have, is part of those recommendations would involve, as written, the vote of a board member, and then that same vote would be rendered again at this board table. We all kind of talk, at least along the way of our orientation, it's sort of like, hold your powder with respect to what your vote's going to be until you get to this table. That board member is already announced in the minutes, frankly, his or her vote before they get to the board table. But just fundamentally, I just think we ought to be there in an advisory capacity, in liaison capacity, but I don't think they ought to vote two places.
To listen, to listen, okay?
Mr. Chair.
Very good, yes.
I wonder if Mr. Conan can help us clarify the status of the Human Services Advisory Board members voting, because some of our advisory boards, we are non-exec officio members, and we do not vote when we're appointed by the board chair to be the board liaison. Mr. Conan, I've been trying to scan these bylaws, and I'm not finding the provision that Commissioner Senjum's concerned about, that county board members might vote in the Human Services Advisory Board and then might vote on the same matters if they came before the full board. Can you help me find that?
Maybe Commissioner Senjum could point me to the right direction on this. Actually, I wasn't involved in this most recent update to the Human Services Advisory Board bylaws, so.
So where is the particular section, Commissioner Senjum or Mr. Conan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Do you have it? Do you have it there?
Page 27.
Page 27, thank you.
It must be on the bottom.
I'm not seeing.
Right, so it looks like number two there says, "Current county employee board service prohibited." Current county employees are prohibited from serving as non-exec officio members of the HSAB to avoid potential conflicts of interest. But retired employees, after they've been retired for a year, are allowed to serve. The goal of that, I think at the time, when the county board discussed it, was it was really focused on not on elected officials. County elected officials was focused on staff members of the county and prohibiting them because of potential conflicts of interest from serving on those advisory boards.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I sit on the Human Services Advisory Board, previously as a citizen or a community member, and now as a representative of the county board? I listen to the conversation, I'm informed by it, but I don't vote. So I'm not voting twice.
I must say that I have been on the Human Services Advisory Board last year, and I never voted, because I regard that it's the community members of the advisory board that moves that forward, but I don't know that that was ever laid out in the bylaws.
Mr. Chair, just a question.
Yes.
May I ask if you are counted in the quorum? As a voting member? I think that, according to, as written, you are.
It appears that Mr. Conan has an answer for us.
Yes, you would be counted as a member of the quorum for purposes of being present as a county elected official.
Yep. Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chair, if you're in the quorum.
Yes.
You're a voting member, in my opinion.
Well, I think that that's something that we can look at, you know.
Yeah, this here, I didn't expect to get solved here. In fact, I've talked to our county administrator, and maybe this is a conversation for another day, but just fundamentally, for this and for that conflict reason, I just don't like those parts.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Chair, if you would entertain it.
Just a second, Heidi has a comment.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I was just going to follow up on Commissioner Senjum's comment. I have put this topic on your retreat for the third effect.
So, all right, it will be discussed, then. It's on an agenda, okay?
I'll hold my comments till later, but it feels to me like the objection, I just want to give a little bit of background, that we occasionally have members of the Human Services Advisory Board who are representing community organizations. And so if there's, and there's value to having them there for their perspective.
Of course, yeah.
But if a matter comes before the Human Services Advisory Board where that organization might directly benefit, it would be inappropriate for them to vote. And if they were to vote, then, you know, the chair could call them on it. And the way, my reading of it is, if a member's found to repeatedly participate in matters coming for the board for action, or where a conflict of interest exists, it'll be referred to the chair for further action. So I don't think we're in, I think we're okay, but it sounds like we are going to be having more discussion about our advisory boards in a general way in the coming months, and so let's put that on the review list for us. So I would renew my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, so your motion is to approve letter D.
Five D on the consent.
Five D on the consent agenda, and I have a second, is that correct?
I believe we did.
Mr. Mueller, yes. All right, so I do have a second. So we are going to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
Opposed here, thank you.
All right, so I count, one, two, three, four, five. Five, yays, one, no. So the motion is carried. Okay, so we are moving to number four. I don't know that there's anything on the regular genus. The number five, discussion decision items. Present an updated set of community indicators for Homestead County, and who is presenting? Thank you, come forward and give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Sunveen. I am the Analysis Manager for Policy Analysis and Communication. I am pleased to introduce two management analysts, Neeti, who is virtually, she is joining us on Teams, and Tina, here today to speak to a high-level overview of our annual community indicators. Neeti, who has compiled much of the population data, will be online to field any questions, and Tina will be giving that high-level overview. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As Stacy said, I'm Tina Jordan, and we are here to present the community indicators. I wanted to make note that the full report was included in your packet. We are providing a summary for you tonight, so it will look slightly different in that we've just highlighted selected indicators from the full report. So the purpose of the community indicators report is to show high-level indicators of resident quality of life. The data are focused on comparing Homestead County's measures to Minnesota and the nation. This report is not intended to be an organizational performance report. It is intended rather to provide a demographic overview of what is happening in Homestead County. The primary data sources for the report I'm going to go over with you tonight are the 2020 decennial census and the 2021 American Community Survey, where we use five-year estimates due to a smaller population when we start breaking those indicators down by different demographic categories. So how do we use the community indicators? These indicators are intended to provide support to county leadership by providing valuable data and information toward fulfilling our county's mission, which is providing the foundation of a vibrant community. The data throughout this report are utilized across our organization for functions of benchmarking. Funding formulas are determined by census data. We measure progress and impact of our programs and services. We use them in grant reporting, either writing for grants or reporting back on grants. We also use them in strategic planning to inform various efforts. Homestead County's population is rapidly growing. We are a growing community. In the last 10 years, we experienced a 12% increase in our population. We currently have over 163,000 people that call Homestead County home. We are projected to grow by 8% over the next 10 years. Our county's population is also younger compared to Minnesota and the nation. We have a median age of 37.5 years compared to that of 38.8 years for Minnesota and the U.S. We also have a lower percent of residents aged 65 years and older, 15.7%, compared to 16.8% for Minnesota and the nation. We are also becoming a more diverse community. When we look at race and ethnicity, Homestead County experienced a 7.8% increase in our diverse population from 2010 to 2020, according to the decennial census count. Our current racial breakdown, if I can direct you to the pie graph on your left, shows that 77.8% of our population in blue identifies as white alone, 6.8% in green identified as black or African-American alone, 6.3% identified as Asian alone, shown in orange, and 6.1% identified as two or more races, shown in yellow.
Mr. Chair. I did not understand the, there was one category that was like some other race alone.
Sure, so I can answer that question for you. So the census is fairly limited in the racial categories that are listed as options. So if any of you completed the decennial census card, there are just several to choose from. So if folks don't identify with one of the listed categories, they have the option to choose other.
Okay.
And so that is what is reflected there with some other race.
Thank you.
I have a question. In the census, did they not have a category for Hispanic?
They do, and that is not shown on your graph. It's shown in the full report. So Hispanic or Latino is considered an ethnicity and not a race. Those are two distinctions. They're in the federal register, very confusing, but.
That explains it, thanks.
Yeah, so 5.6% of our population identifies as Hispanic or Latino.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If we move to the right side, we also see that 14% of our households speak a language other than English in the home. Within Homestead County school districts, there are 82 different languages spoken. Looking at the table on the bottom right, 11% of our residents were born outside the United States. When we look at our foreign-born population, the highest proportion, 39%, come from the Asia region of the world, and 30% were born in the African region. Of note, Homestead County and Minnesota, we have met much higher rates of foreign-born residents from Africa and Asia compared to the nation. And again, those are shown in the red boxes on the bottom right table. Looking at education and income, Homestead County's median household income, which is reflected on the top left, was $84,656 in 2021. This is $6,960 higher than Minnesota's median household income of $77,700, and it's over $15,000 higher than the U.S. median household income of $69,021. We move to the bottom on the right. Our higher median income is largely driven by a higher proportion of Homestead County residents possessing a bachelor's degree or higher compared to Minnesota and the U.S. So 47.1% of our population 25 years or older possess a bachelor's degree or higher. Moving to the right, we look at median household income by race and ethnicity. And when we break it down this way, we can identify that there are disparities within our median household income. Of note, households identifying as black or African-American have the lowest median household income in Homestead County of $38,694, which is more than half of the median household income overall.
On that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We were just looking at, meeting with the HRA and looking at median income. They, we were using a reference of a family of four. What is, do you know what the base is for median household income in the census? Is it a family of two? Is it three? Is it?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head, but I can look into that for you.
It's just that the number's different. It looks like Ms. Welsh knows. I have the answer for you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm quite certain that Tina probably just can double-check me, but in the census, they're not looking at how many people are in a household, so they're taking the median. Every household, doesn't matter how many people are in. When you heard data just in the last hour from housing, they're using a housing measure, which is area median income. And so that's a, that's a specific measure defined by how many people are in the household, and you get a different number based on how many people are in the household. But this would just be all households are in.
Thank you.
I'm looking through all of our experts over here, yep, and they're not.
It's helpful to know because it gets confusing.
It sure does, yep.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cascaden, speaking to what Ms. Welsh was speaking to, the federal poverty guidelines would drive a lot of the HRA work, and that is based on household size. So this, again, is looking at, no matter how many people live in that household, if you live alone, you're a household. If you're a two-parent family with six kids, it's.
It's every household across the county and dividing.
Correct.
Thank you.
So speaking of the poverty level, we're going to switch to poverty and unemployment. On the left side, we're going to talk about poverty, and the percent of Homestead County residents living below the federal poverty level in 2021 was 7.6%. This is lower than the state of Minnesota and the U.S. Poverty rates for the county and the state and the nation did all trend down between 2020 and 2021. A higher proportion of Homestead County females, shown as the bullet point there, lived in poverty, with 8.5% living below the poverty level compared to males at 6.7%. When we look at poverty level according to age group, we see that children younger than 18 years and young adults between the ages of 18 and 34 years experience the highest rates of poverty in Homestead County. This is reflective of the nationwide trends with these two age groups experiencing the highest levels of poverty across the United States and Minnesota. I will say, though, Homestead County's numbers are still lower across all age categories in comparison to Minnesota and Homestead County. This information is in the full report, too. Moving to the right, when we break down unemployment by race and ethnicity, we see that the yellow dashed line is Homestead County's unemployment rate at 3.2%. So again, I've shifted on you, we're shifting to unemployment on that right side in the graph. It is lower, the 3.2% is lower than the black dashed line, which represents Minnesota's unemployment rate, which was at 4% in 2021. Unemployment rates, though, among black or African-Americans, some other race, two or more races, and Hispanic and Latino residents are higher, sometimes double or triple the rate of 3.2% overall. We did not show you the poverty rate by race and ethnicity. Again, this is unemployment rate. The poverty rate, there's also disparity that exists within the poverty rate. This is on slide 13 of your report. Of note, black or African-Americans have the highest poverty rate at 30.5%. Looking at housing and living, on your left is homeownership. Slightly fewer Homestead County residents own their own home compared to Minnesotans, but among those who do own a home, if we look at the top center, 15.6% spend more than one-third of their income on mortgage payments compared to 22.7% of homeowners in Minnesota and 27.6% of homeowners in the U.S. Shifting to renters, on the top right, we see that nearly half of renters, 49.1% in Homestead County, spend one-third or more of their income on rent, which is comparable to the U.S. and Minnesota. Looking at the table on the bottom, Homestead County households have an average of 2.49 persons per household, which is similar to the state and the nation. Median home values, Minnesota and Homestead County are fairly in line. Homestead County runs slightly higher, about $5,000 higher than the U.S. overall. Our median gross monthly rent is approximately the same as that of Minnesota, but lower compared to the United States. And again, this is across the entire U.S. Fewer households in Homestead County are without broadband internet, so that last row on that bottom table, so 12.9% of Homestead County households report not having broadband internet, compared to the state of Minnesota at 15.9% and the U.S. at 17%.
Mr. Chair, since we have a state goal of, you know, border to border broadband, is that lower subscription rate because they do not have access or because they don't have the funds?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cascaden, that's a great question. I don't have the answer again for that for you. This would be, all the data we are reporting to you is from the census, and they are just simply asking if they have it or not, so that's something we could dig into, the reason So to recap, the main highlights we've pulled off for you tonight are, our population is growing. It's increased 12% over the past 10 years, and it's projected to increase 8% over the next 10 years. We are now the seventh-largest populated county in Minnesota. We are up from number eight. We surpassed the nation on many major indicators such as education, median household income, poverty rate, unemployment. But similar to Minnesota, as well as the nation, disparities do exist for various resident groups when we break it down by age, race, ethnicity, gender, where we see disparity for those residence groups compared to the overall rate. Again, this was a recap. It's a summary of what's included in the full report. We wanted to put together a quick slideshow of those with a checkmark next to it we've talked with you tonight about. Those that are bold are trends that are included in the full report, and we encourage you to look through the full report and let us know if you have any additional questions. You'll see some of these stats again at your February 3 retreat as we weave them into the environmental scan for strategic planning. Thank you for your time this evening. Again, I'm Tina Jordan. My colleague, Neeti Shashadarin, is online, and we welcome any questions. If you have any questions as you read through the report, please feel free to contact us.
Yeah, why don't you just wait a second? We'll ask the board if they have any questions. Any questions?
I have an observation. I want to thank the PAC unit for doing this, because we've talked about this a couple, three years. There was a time where there were community organizations trying to organize to put this data together. We may find it interesting, but a lot of our community organizations find it really essential for looking at how they target their resources, using it for making grant applications, having a ready source of information. Was, we were using Minnesota Compass a few years ago, and particularly, there was a strong interest in getting clearer about our disparity data, which you've hit on here very well, as we, if we look at equity, in the broadest sense of equity, you've covered a lot of it here. So are you intending to make this report available out to United Way and the not-for-profit consortium and other organizations so they're aware that it's handy and done and ready available to them?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cascaden, that's a great question. It will be posted publicly on our website. We across the county try to coordinate with many departments to ensure we're reflecting the same stats. As many of you know, there are variations, and even the 2020 decennial census might be slightly different. So, yeah, it is available on our website. I'm going to defer to my communications experts to know how it's communicated and marketed, but it's available out there for anyone who wants to use it.
It's good to know it's available, I think, taking it the next step to communicate that, you know, to interested parties of where they can find it and how they can use it. It's an important piece of work for others and for ourselves as well, so, for benchmarking and, yeah.
I appreciate the work that you put into this and looking at the statistics. I think it's fairly easy to say that, again, we're very fortunate to live in Homestead County, but at the same time, I think that sometimes people who are outside of the county that look at the county will sometimes draw a wrong conclusion that because we're wealthy, we still don't need assistance from the state to fund vital programs, because although our income level and our education level might be higher than the state, it doesn't mean that we do not have people that are in need, that we don't have homeless people, that we don't have low-income seniors. And so I think that it's really important that that was outlined here as well. So hopefully, those people that are looking at this will remember that we still have a county obligation, and we still need assistance to drive those programs. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if you'd indulge.
Yes.
Neeti, so this, I never said it properly, ever, but I believe she's left the county, but is she? Nithi? Few more months, well, she's served us very well, wish her well.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then next item on the agenda is the update on the implementation of the joint study recommendations.
Chair, right, Commissioner, Stacey Sanvia again, with Policy Analysis and Communication. So just a little context before we get into the presentation. Back in 2020, the county board passed a resolution declaring race and racism as a public health issue. County staff supported the Public Health Services Advisory Board and the Human Rights Commission in developing a set of recommendations to achieve racial equity. This past October, the county board accepted the full report along with 42 recommendations across nine focus areas. Since then, those, the past couple of months, implementation and project planning efforts have occurred. So I'm now pleased to introduce Lee, who is also a management analyst in the PAC department. Lee is going to share with the board tonight these initial project planning efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey. Um, as Stacey said, my name is Lee Durban, I'm a management analyst here in Olmsted County. I'm part of the Policy Analysis and Communications Team. And I'm going to give you an update on our joint study on race and racism as a public health issue. Um, our mission moving forward here, after the report was accepted, is that we're going to evaluate all 42 of those recommendations across the nine focus areas that were prepared by the Joint Study Commission of Human Rights Commission and Public Health Services Advisory Board. And we're going to prepare an organization-wide response to that. The first thing that we did is to set up a governance structure for how to respond to that. Um, so as you can see on the screen there, put together a visual of what this might look like. At the very top, we have governance of the Olmsted County Board. Um, and then all the committees that you serve on will be our primary resource as we move forward. So as we have questions or needs regarding any of the recommendations, we'll go through those committees primarily. And then I'll talk about communication later on in the presentation. For oversight, we're going to be seeking that from our Olmsted County Executive Management Team, which includes our county administrator. Uh, we'll be putting together a project team that will manage the operations. And then as you can see on the sides, we have two different roles there. The one on the left would be my role as project manager. And then on the, on the right, is an Accountability Advisory Board, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that will mean coming up. All right, so first, what my role might look like, well, will, is mainly to help determine the project trajectories and manage the work. I'll be facilitating the organizational response to the joint study recommendations, help liaise between the governing bodies as outlined in that governance structure. I'll be responsible for reporting and communicating across the organization and to work with our Policy Analysis and Communications Staff for our external communications. And then work very closely and partner with our Accountability Advisory Board on this project. Uh, so next, that Accountability Advisory Board is going to be a new group established through our One Olmsted Initiative, and that's going to be called a Community Council. One function of that Community Council will be to serve as the recommended Accountability Board for the recommendations. Their role there will be to help monitor the progress of how we implement these recommendations, provide feedback to departments and different programs through me. Uh, they may report back to the board and the community. And they'll regularly review metrics and targets for relevancy and to ensure that they're community-centric.
How will they be selected?
Trying to think if I had a slide for that later on. Um, thank you, Commissioner. Um, those people, we have not decided yet. So what we have done is asked a select group of community members to, to design that work. And so those design team will be starting this week, actually. There's going to be five community representatives across some various diverse backgrounds that are going to come and advise us as to what our Community Council should look like. So what we should look for in, in participants, what they should represent, the frequency that they meet, um, and help establish a lot of those operations, but do so from a lens of the community member themselves. That help answer your question?
We're getting there.
Okay. All right. So, uh, we look at the governance and the role of the board and committees, I'll walk through that. The graphic here outlines the five primary committees that we're going to be working with. Um, and we're going to ask that these committees on the county board have some decision-making authority as we move forward. We'll seek leadership and direction from the board and committees. We'll seek approval for any resources or budget changes we may pursue. And then make sure that you receive regular updates on any implementation work. Internally, our executive management team will receive those regular updates. They're also going to provide direction and also lead culture change within the organization. Um, I've listed, listed on the slide, the various members of that executive management team, um, in case you had questions about who made up that group. Um, we're also going to assemble, for lack of a title yet, a One Olmsted Joint Study Response Team. So what we've put together here is it's a, um, a collaboration between our One Olmsted Initiative and responding to the joint study recommendations. Um, when this work group is assembled, they're going to help with project management, help strategy, strategize moving forward. They're going to help train and, and prepare staff for any changes we make. We're going to seek their support in designing and implementing any new, any new work across the organization. And then we'll also ask them to help us with evaluation support. These staff will be charged with leading culture change and behavioral change across our organization as related to those recommendations. And then we'll also ask them to liaise across divisions and departments that aren't directly involved in responding to those recommendations.
Really quick question for you. Um, so we have 42 recommendations. Across this organizational structure that you've put forth, how are they prioritized? Who makes that final decision on resource allocation? Are you going to get into that?
Yes, I will get into that, yes. Um, and so that's some of these, um, I'll go through some initial steps that we're going to talk about, and then that is kind of on our next steps coming up, and so I'll talk about those towards the end. Okay, so, um, currently, we're just rolling this out, communicating internally, starting with groups that we need to engage right away to make things happen. Um, so specific groups across the organization are hearing relevant, relevant information that will help drive that work. Our intention is that all staff will have had the opportunity to become familiarized with the final report and know what their role might look like moving forward by the end of the first quarter. As many of you know and have experienced, Amy Lebel and Abby Trigger, who helped, um, helped facilitate and did a wonderful job of putting the final report together, and I and a couple of subgroup members have been out presenting within the community. So sharing the final report with organizations like League of Women Voters, the Rochester Nonprofit Consortium, and other, um, other groups. Let's see. Um, we're also starting our project planning, which is the bulk of what this presentation is about here today. One thing that's really important to know as we talk about project planning is that, um, it would, um, it's not realistic for us to assume that we'll be implementing all 42 recommendations right away. It's going to take a lot of work, um, a lot of planning, a lot of preparation. And we haven't done this before, and we're learning as we go. So, um, we're just getting some of this work off the ground, but want to just make sure that we're communicating. It's going to take several months of planning and patience as we, as we put this work together.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you mentioned some of the community presentations and website updates. What is the, are you getting feedback from, from community about the 42 recommendations that could be shared in a general sense with the board?
Sure, I would say in the general sense, overall response is very positive. A lot of gratitude for the group for putting together the report and the recommendations. A lot of community, community organizations have appreciated having the resource to help them make programmatic decisions. There's a lot of interest in those community organizations collaborating with us moving forward. So we have some work to do internally in, um, in figuring out the best way to move forward with that. Not only how can we meet our needs when it comes to collaborating with community partners, but what are our community partners' needs moving forward? And so that is in our work plan here moving forward to best address that in a way that'll work for everyone. That answer yours?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
I am so sorry.
I'm staring constantly at that, I'm having trouble hearing today.
I also have a very weak voice, I'll, I'll lean closer to the microphone.
Thank you, that, I very much appreciate it.
Okay, internally, uh, we are working on departments and committee onboarding. So basically, um, we have these 42 recommendations, and we're going to align these recommendations with various programs and departments across the county, and also with this, the committees that you are part of here at the county board. Specifically, we want to leverage good work that we're already doing. But by allocating this work across the organization, it's going to help us with the governance structure and decision-making. It will help us better manage our resources. It will help us be responsible with our communication, in that we're not over or under-communicating about the work to any particular group. And it will help distribute responsibilities to align with expertise. Before I move into specific board and committee alignment, um, I do want to note that there are some committees that aren't directly under our purview, like OCJC, that we are going to be working with directly to discuss how they can help support this work moving forward. In order to be respectful of your time, I will probably skip through a lot of the specifics in the presentation, but you should have those in your packet today, um, with all of that detailed information. Okay, so, moving forward, um, we took those 42 recommendations and, um, and looked at the committees that we have available to us and tried to find where we can, um, where we can set these recommendations, who can help us move these forward, and where is this relevant in the work? With admin committee, there were quite a few recommendations. Being that admin committee has a very far reach within the organization, we ended up having a lot of recommendations kind of fall in this area where we would ask that they would go through that admin committee group. Uh, the recommendations that we are hoping would sit there cross eight of the nine focus areas that the report uncovered. Those eight areas included mental health and substance use. Or, I'm sorry, were all of the areas except mental health and substance use. So they included accountability, our advisory boards, our criminal justice, customer service, data collection and use, financial health, housing and homelessness, and our organizational culture and systems. So you'll notice there's quite a few slides that go through what each of those recommendations are. And there's a reference to our final report if you wanted more information about those specific recommendations. So we're going to move to the Legislative Planning Group. Um, because the Legislative Planning Group is not a formal board committee, we anticipate this group supporting these recommendations secondarily. So when we seek approval or direction, decision-making will go through the committee. But we will likely go to the, like, the Legislative Planning Group for subject matter expertise or potential direction. There were, I think, four recommendations that we thought would fall under their purview, and they fell into the areas of advisory boards, data collection and use, financial health, and housing and homelessness. We are hoping that the Health, Housing and Human Services Committee will help us with a great deal of these recommendations that fall under the categories of customer service, data collection and use, financial health, housing and homelessness, and mental health and substance use. The next group to review is the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board. And the two focus areas where we found recommendations that aligned with their work included criminal justice and housing and homelessness. And lastly, we have physical development. I do want to note that there were no recommendations that directly aligned with physical development. However, there are three recommendations that we think physical development could support secondarily. These are in the areas of advisory boards and organizational culture and systems. Okay. So, um, additional next steps. I think it's important that I note, um, our ask today is that you, um, you review the recommendations that are at the report, that we have, um, a guess would fall under the purview of those particular committees. And if we have erroneously aligned something, or if you have questions or if it needs to be added to another organization or committee's plate, that you let us know so that we can make sure we're going to the right people with each of these recommendations. The next steps that we're going to take are related to asset and gaps analysis. So we need to determine what work we're already doing and what existing resources that we have. We're going to communicate across the entire organization and to all of our staff about what our response is going to look like. By, um, by doing this asset and gaps analysis, it's going to help us prioritize the work. So when we prioritize the work, we're going to consider things like, um, like I mentioned, where are we already doing great work, what can we leverage? Where do we have some barriers that we're going to need to plan around and potentially reallocate or request resources? Also, where did our community groups that helped put this work together? Where did they prioritize those recommendations? How does the community see that as a need? So we're going to be taking all of those things into consideration as we prioritize. In those things, our proposal for prioritization is going to come through the committees. So if we have recommendations related to mental health and substance use, we'll prioritize those recommendations within that focus area and then bring those back to the committees for feedback and discussion. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, we are hoping to embed that Accountability Advisory Board within our Community Council that One Olmsted is putting together. Uh, the work for that is starting this week, we have community members helping us design that. And so we're going to work on completing that design in first quarter and then refine throughout the year, make sure that it's working the way that we want it to and it's effective. I'm also going to make sure that we have some ongoing communications. So I will be back. I'll also be returning to specific boards or committees, especially for more thorough information and discussion. Like I mentioned, if any of those recommendations don't seem to align well, please reach out and let us know. And then just a reminder that this work is, is lengthy. We probably won't have quantitative data results within the year, but we can be sharing action updates. So what steps have we taken to move this work forward and those kinds of things? All right. I failed to include my contact information in the slideshow, so for those of you that don't have my contact information, feel free to go through our administrative support staff.
Does the board have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I find the most useful piece of this is the chart that's at the very end of the document, and as I glance at it, you know, there's a lot of assignments to particular committees. There's not, there's not an assessment done of, at this point, of, sort of doing a two-by-two matrix, you know, what's, what are we ready to do, what is, what is underway, what's the feasibility? It feels to me like there's another whole layer of analysis that each committee will have to do to figure out what is going to be taken and which priority order, you know, what we are, so it feels, this feels like assignments have been made, but the analysis is not complete, and I'm not quite sure how we're going to get there, which is, in some ways is just fine, but I'm also a little, I'm a little confused by the community council through One Olmstead. I did have a conversation this afternoon with Lisa Morris Helm about it, but I am, I'm still wondering how our other advisory boards figure into accountability. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm pleased to see the report is done. I'm, I think we have a lot of things that are underway that isn't really directly identified yet either, and so I feel like there's just a lot of more analysis that needs to be done before. I don't want to call for more analysis because I don't want it, I don't want to delay, but it doesn't feel like, it isn't clear to me how we're proceeding. We've made assignments, but it isn't clear to me how we're proceeding or that we've really determined who's on first, what's on second, what's, you know, what's, what's already underway.
I can, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I can help with that, Commissioner. Well, I'll try to. So these, these alignments, this, this matrix, the attachment I gave you where we outlined which recommendations and which boards or committees, we needed a place to start. So when we do that assets and gaps analysis, when we look at where our gaps are in our organization and where we do have work already existing, we know that we can take those to the committees that are outlined there. So those committees are going to help us develop that, that gap you were mentioning. So that work has yet to be done, but we're going to be doing it with the committees that have been outlined in the, in the report.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, just a couple more details. I think Lee said it correctly, that this is dividing up all the tasks, all the recommendations that need to be analyzed. It's still, you know, it's not saying you will do and you will adopt any of these recommendations. It's splitting them up so that you can tackle them, the seven of you plus staff, of course, can tackle that question. Does this recommendation seem like something that you want to push forward? And if so, then what is our asset and gaps analysis? What is the priority for how you want to tackle that? All of that work will happen at committee using staff from the departments, plus Lee is kind of our, pull us all together, oh my gosh, this is huge, hold us together as we go through this. So she's going to be a key person, but you're going to have staff from the departments working on what is our actual, what is actually some ideas for how we might implement? I mean, I keep going back to participatory budgeting because I've been thinking about that one a lot. We'll be coming to admin committee to talk about what does that really mean? What's the appetite of the board to move in a direction that is participatory? Maybe it's not quite exactly what was proposed by the joint study, maybe it is, but maybe it's something a little bit different. We talked about that just a little bit at admin committee today. Perhaps it's about more community engagement in the budget process. So that discussion, okay, do you want to move forward with this recommendation and how will happen at committee, if that makes sense? Does that help at all? It's been a long day. Everybody's tired.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I, I just point out that the Olmstead County Justice Coordinating Council also had been looking at equity issues, and the data collection and use topic was their, kind of their number one recommendation in addition to some of the changes that would happen within participation, full participation of the bench. That is a very complicated issue, and it seems to me that that, it's like, what, where are we going to focus first? And I would just argue that, we heard it from our OCJC committee, we know that, we heard today in, in Health and Human Services, that our data analytics capacity is so key to our management of our public health investments and our public health focus, and that we have, we've traditionally heard how often we have problems with the state of Minnesota and having access to our own data. I would just take the chance to argue that in terms of prioritization and complexity, that data, if we want to be a data-driven organization, we may want to just start there because we keep hearing that we aren't collecting data in, in a way that is, is even usable interdepartmentally, let alone having access to the data we have to report to the state. So I just think maybe that's a place to begin.
One of them, I'd say, Mr. Chair, if you'd allow me, I would say there's, you probably don't want to narrow down to just one priority.
No.
We can't start with all 42 or 40, oh, I forgot, it's 42 or 44, but, but you can pick more than one, you know, perhaps it's one in each committee that you want to prioritize, for example. So while I agree with Commissioner Kuskaden that that's an important piece and something, data pieces cross over so much of our work, that is a, a strong case for why that ought to be a priority. You might end up picking, you know, five or six other priorities also to push forward this year. And remember, some of this we're doing, some of this we're already doing, so it isn't, it's augmentation of, of what we are, it seems daunting, but staff are very focused on many of these things already, and it's a matter of thinking about how can we augment this or maybe just focus a little differently in some ways to be able to capture that good feedback, be able to respond to that idea that came up through this study. Lee, would you, does that make sense to you? Yeah, okay.
Yes, I agree.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick comment, building on all of this conversation, clearly it's an evolving structure and oversight that we're building here. I guess when I look at this metric, a couple of things, when there's a recommendation that has a primary assignment, a secondary assignment, thinking through, again, prioritization, or we can have both of those groups evaluate existing resources and work that's happening there, then bring all that together, how we think through that. And clearly, this matrix is going to strengthen greatly once we do understand what existing work and existing resources are already being put towards it, and is give us, going to give us a lot more data and information to move into that prioritization process. Yeah, right now, I mean, I absolutely look at this and it's overwhelming to think of 43, but I think we get some more metrics and data behind this about existing work, and it's going to greatly inform all of us. And then, yeah, I'm still a little unclear on structure and the boards and how that's built, look forward to you continuing to update us on how that moves forward.
Chairman, Commissioner, did you want me to go back to your question regarding community council and the accountability board?
No, I think there'll be other opportunities to talk about that, but I do think that's a, how, how we integrate that with our existing advisory boards. You know, I, I've said in conversation, we have a human rights commission, are they going to be involved? How are we, how are we engaging instead of necessarily reaching out and bringing in a whole new set of actors? We need, we maybe need a little both in, but I don't need to speak any more time on it today.
All right.
Mr. Chair, could I just?
Yes.
Ask a question? And of course, four of us weren't here when, when this was, was, was put together and approved. And the idea of, we're addressing racism as a, as a public health issue, and, and thank you for your work because it's, it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of thought that has to go into this. There are recommendations, and those recommendations relate to things that county government can do, you know, through legislations or policies or what, what, what we do. It just kind of seems to me that, and maybe we're doing it, I just don't see it yet, if we're going to address racism as a public health issue in our community, it kind of depends on even involving the community perhaps more than advisory councils and so on and so forth. It seems to me it means getting out into the neighborhoods, and that's probably people at this table and carrying that torch to some extent, more than just at the, at the policy summit, so to speak, but, but, but in the neighborhoods with our people and having conversations and, and trying to, you know, unfold this issue and, and, and improve, improve our status relative to this issue. Is that contemplated at all in, in your, your thoughts or your strategies? You know, the neighborhood, the city's neighborhood councils or whatever we call them, are they engaged at all in this?
Sure, Commissioner, thanks for the question. It's a very good one, especially for those that didn't have the opportunity to, to be here when the final report was accepted. I'll say a couple of things about that and then ask maybe some of my leadership to chime in with, with anything to add. First thing I would say is that when we commissioned that study, we, we needed to put parameters around that because coming up with solving something like racism is, is a big thing. So their, their purview when they were commissioned for the study was things that are under our jurisdiction within the county organization. So because of that, a lot of those recommendations are going to reflect what we have some, some control over, for lack of a better word. We have heard overwhelmingly from community organizations that they want to continue to be involved. We had a great number of organizations and community members contribute to the study itself by offering their feedback and perspectives and helping us, helping the group in their development of the final report. So we're still strategizing about the best way to engage with them moving forward. I think we have some learning to do about what our needs are going to be moving forward as we implement this, but also we'd like to grow our awareness of what the community needs are too, so that we can all be successful in this. So it's on our radar and it'll be part of our work plan, but I don't have any more specifics right now.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and I just want to give a thank you for your efforts and frankly thank last year's county board for taking this courageous and, and important step because it, we just saw the livability factors here, there's, there's work to be done. And so thank you very much.
Ms. Chair, now Commissioner Sanjam, you, you may find, I'm sort of sorry we didn't review the recommendations in the process today and move directly to implementation because our new board members did not hear that presentation or even the ones that you made last week to the Coalition for Housing or the Alliance for Housing. But there was a phenomenal amount, it was a year and a half study, and I, I was impressed with the number of community surveys and community engagement activities that were, were made. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I'm too tired to remember, something like 400 and some people were engaged through the process in, in, in helping to formulate this, then this got honed down by the study group. There was direct contact with each of our, through the Community Mobilization Resource Team, whatever that group is called, it's got a long title, with 11 different specific ethnic and racial communities, and there was work done with a variety of community organizations, there was work done internally. So it was a broad process of, of, of going to people and saying, here's what the data shows us, just as we saw earlier with some of our health indicators, you know, what does the data show us? What is your experience? What are, what are your recommendations? And, and we did say to the team, we want things that are actionable by the county. And the team came back and said, you, your definition, you need to change your definition because we're looking at structural racism. And we're not, and that was a, that wasn't necessarily an easy, easy conversation to have. I think the whole awakening that across the nation after George Floyd's death, we're all grappling with this topic in ways we're, we're learning, you know, we're learning to have the conversations and looking at what are some of the hidden things that have resulted in different outcomes for different populations. But public health fundamentally is looking at what are the social determinants that drive health outcomes? And they, you know, they did a good job of, of looking at those and gaining community input. That doesn't mean that we don't need to continually have community engagement around, with every, you know, different group and our, and our, our clusters and our, our communities around their satisfaction with our services and what their current needs are and, and so on, but it's, it's a, it's more than conversation. It's, it has to move to structural change of how we do things as well as how we listen. So, but I still think we're, you know, there's a lot more work to be done here.
Absolutely. And if I might add, Chairman, Commissioner, one other thing I failed to mention earlier in my presentation, we did include a link in the packet for today that takes you to the final report published on our website along with a board resolution. I think there's some appendices there as well as a video about the effort. So I, I think it may help.
And I think we're one of the first counties in the nation. There are a few other counties that have, have taken this tack of looking at race as a public health issue, and I'm actually, I'm, I'm hoping that we will consider calling out this effort to NACO, not so much on the recommendations, but the process, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to cede my time to Deborah, please. She's just got one little piece.
All right.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it's Deborah Miller. I'm Director of Policy Analysis and Communications. Couple of quick things, so taking them in backwards order. So Commissioner Kuskaden, yes, we have a meeting to discuss whether or not we want to submit an application for a NACO award for this project coming up next week, I think. Commissioner Sanjam, I would also offer that for any of our new commissioners, if you would like to have a one-on-one sit-down with us to go through that process that we went through and review the recommendations in more detail, we'd be happy to do that. I know you all made videos about it as candidates, I know you're familiar with it, but again, to not have been here through that whole process, I, I can certainly understand if you want to have more of a one-on-one. And then kind of finally back to the overall next steps. I just want to make sure that we feel clear and that you feel clear. So tonight was really intended as just catching up, here's where we are, introduction for the new commissioners and an update for the existing from the previous board. But really, the, the plan for this work has been to go through the committees in part because of the complexity and the number of recommendations, to try and come here to a full board each time and discuss 42 things, just felt very overwhelming. So our next steps, as Lee said, would be to really get down on paper, what are we already doing? What do the staff who have some expertise feel are the opportunities, or as Commissioner Kuskaden mentioned, feasibility, some of those other factors that would contribute to prioritization? Once we have that ready for you, we would start going back through those committees to start the more in-depth conversation about a smaller set of recommendations. Then once the committees feel that they are ready, that you all in your committee roles have your priorities together, then we would come back again to the full board. And that would really give us the picture that Heidi was saying, are we working on five things this year, 20 things this year? You know, what is the big picture? So that's what we're kind of seeking your affirmation that that direction sounds appropriate. affirmation that that direction sounds appropriate to you. And I'm guessing it will take us a few months to get that inventory and that feasibility matrix ready for you. But you would see us at committees probably later this spring or early summer. Does that help with the next steps?
Thank you.
Does that seem minimal? Okay. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Any further questions for me?
Are there any other questions or board comments about this? All right. So, yeah, I just want to thank you and Lee and the other people that have been working on this. And I think that Commissioner Kuskaden had already alluded to the fact, or actually said it, that I think that for Olmsted County, uh, this is a step that we've entered into and are boldly going where no other counties have gone. And therefore, there are some unknowns about this process that we will deal with. The board will be flexible. And I'm sure that we can make changes to the process as needed as we go along. And it, I think it's always going to be interesting because as I look through the forty-two things, there are some things that I thought, well, you know, this appears to be easy. Maybe we can do those right away. And other things that are going to take a lot more study and a lot more decision-making about. On the other hand, I do appreciate the comments and I think that the public should be aware of that, that this isn't a quick process and that we're going to be, uh, finished with, that it's going to be a long-term study. And the board will be persistent with, uh, sticking with our advisory boards as well as the other staff recommendations that we have to make this a better county. So I do appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right. So, uh, we are at number six, board and committee reports. So we'll start at to my right. Commissioner Rosman, do you have a board or a committee report or a comment?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner Mueller.
Nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner Kuskaden.
I thought, Mr. Chair, that, uh, we might want to report on the legislative committee met this morning. And while we're getting ready for our time to meet with our, uh, new delegate, delegation to legislature on January twentieth, we also, uh, decided that we think that it is appropriate for Olmsted County to write a letter about the can, pending cannabis legislation, which we'd been silent on, uh, to, to date, to look at the, um, to look at the role of counties, the need for, uh, high levels of, of regulatory guidance and statewide consistency. And, um, our chair volunteered to, to draft a letter. We don't have a, a position in favor or in opposition to what the legislature intends to do, but it appears that they are going to move forward. And so we're very concerned about the role of county government in this, in this new, um, with, with this new product comes, becomes legal. We also, I think those are the, the, probably, oh, we also just reminded ourselves that if we are going to be invited to give testimony, we should, we should let the, let Jennifer Berquem know. And as a matter of fact, then we got invited to give testimony this week on an issue that kind of relates to one of the recommendations in, in the racism report is making it easier for people to participate in county board meetings through distance, um, participation in the case of illness or incapacitation for county board members. So that was a rule that was put in place temporarily, which, uh, we'd like to see continue. So, um, just, that's just a kind of update for the alleged committee. The Human Services Committee, um, we had a report today from the Health Department on the experience with COVID one point O and COVID two point O. And, um, there was a lot to be learned, uh, for us as a county and emergency preparedness and the cross-organizational requirements of that. And, uh, so, um, I just want to call that out, that, that, that a post-event analysis has been done. And we had a, a good briefing, uh, here as well. And the staff are recommending that the benefits cliff that we had approved as a pilot, they're recommending that we not go forward with that pilot. So those, those are just some quick reports out of the two committees that, that some of our colleagues did not get to attend today.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner Sanjam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I have nothing that, uh, upsets this report.
Okay, very good. And I have no report. So, uh, I'm ready to accept a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Are you going to reconvene immediately?
Oh, yes, very good. So we have, let's just explain, uh, to the listening audience, we have just adjourned the board meeting. But we have two other boards yet, uh, to deal with tonight. And so, we're just going to take just a few seconds here while.
You know, they were, we sold them the old government center. They paid us over twenty-six years. We ended up not having to bond to build this building. Is that, is my recollection correct?
I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Walls knows anymore about that particular topic. I recall that we did sell, because I, I worked on that myself, the old courthouse to Mayo on a contract for deed. And that was paid off roughly five years ago.
Right.
We gave them a deed at that time, but.
But I, I, you know, I was around in those days. And so as, as I recall, but I was not active with it, I was not on the county board. But as I recall, part of the, um, our, a county employee, that, that part of the idea of doing this structure was that it facilitated that kind of, of contract for selling one building to build another. And then it ended up, we didn't need it. But just as an example of, of having a tool in the toolbox. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We're getting into history. I'm just curious. Does, does this, does this own any property?
It does not hold any property, no.
Okay.
It's, just think of the Cayman Islands. This is our Cayman Islands.
I'm going all the way back. You know, they call it the river bend in those days.
The Riverbend Agreement?
Yeah. Did this buy the river bend? Somebody had to buy the river bend to build this, demolish all, all the structures there.
Mr. Chair.
Who knows? It doesn't really matter, but it's just.
Mr. Chair.
We got a history in here someday.
My recollection, of course, very foggy, is that the county purchased the properties. I, and, um, did the demolition, prepared the site, did the development of the, what we will soon be the Justice Center, of our half of the Government Center. The city came in later. They came in later into the agreement that they would also move City Hall here. And then there was some agreement made along the way that the city would build, you know, compatible with their own architects, their own building. And that the city, uh, wanted to manage the parking lot. So an odd part of our Government Center is the city manages the parking lot and owns the parking lot. At least that's my understanding. So it, and, and, you know, Matt Miller would have all the history.
I don't have political history that, uh, you couldn't get the sales tax passed in time for the city to.
Do it.
Bill collaboratively.
Oh, okay. That's what happened. Okay. Were you on the council at that time?
Yes.
Okay. So.
So, now, number three here is to approve the audit of the corporation's books, but there is no cash, so.
Right. It's, it's another, theoretically during the year, if you decided the building authority had something to do and we, the county needed to allocate cash to the billing authority, then there would be cash generated and potentially a need for an audit. So again, it's just covering our bases.
So do we need a motion to approve?
Right.
Audit? All right.
To the extent that an audit is needed, basically the building authority then uses the county's auditor to audit the building authority's books.
So, I see. All right. So therefore I.
I would move that we approve an audit of the authority's books and records.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second to approve the audit of the corporation's books and accounts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. And then we do have minutes. And, uh, so I, and you can look through those, but I'm asking for a motion to approve the 2022 Olmsted County Billing Authority Minutes.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. There is no other business.
I'm moved. I adjourn.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn. I need a second. And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So I have adjourned the meeting of the Olmsted County Billing Authority. Now, I am going to call to order the Regional Railroad Authority. All right. So first, uh,
Would you like me to provide some background quickly on this one as well?
Thank you for the background.
So roughly about fifteen years ago, I believe it was two thousand nine, in connection with the last effort to create a high-speed rail line between Rochester and the Twin Cities, as referred to as the zip line. The county board at that time felt it was a good idea because there was the potential that the county might get involved in acquiring assets to support creation of a line to create a regional rail authority. So that effort ended roughly ten years ago, but as with the building authority, we still interact with railroads. There's still at least potentially the need that we could use some powers that a regional rail authority might have, that a county might not have. So again, another, we spend five minutes a year to keep it alive in the event that we need it down the road. So.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move election of officers, Chair Greg Wright, Vice Chair Sheila Kuskaden, Secretary Heidi Welsh, and Treasurer Wilfredo Roman Catala.
All right. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right.
Chair, I would move an audit of the railroad authority's books and accounts.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
All right. I have a second. All in favor of approving the audit of the authority's books and records, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the 2022 Railroad Authority Minutes.
All right. I need a second. All right. I have a second. All right. So all in favor of approving the 2022 Minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. There is no other business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
I have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion to second. So all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has accepted. We are adjourned. And that completes our business for this evening. Let's get a little faster, man.
Sorry about popping in that.
No.